It's eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Day, bunch of allegiance. United States of America. And through the Republic where which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay. Now welcome everybody. Let's see. We don't have any sign speakers or anything, right? So. Meeting guests. Anybody have any announcements, correspondence that we need to get on the floor? Sue?
No.
Nick, you okay?
Um, I guess I can do this update. We have the Town and Chem for that board meeting. And I think this gave us enough faith that they're going to be bumping up into two percent of collection starting next year.
What?
We're going to two percent.
Going up to the two percent?
Yeah, starting next year. And then we'll be going to two point two five twenty twenty eight. Um, their rec- their recommended twenty twenty five estimate is we'll be collecting three point eight million dollars. That would actually be split among.
Three point eight?
Yeah, three point eight. Um, number didn't go up much from the previous year. The reason being is the COVID bonuses kind of kept the businesses whole during that time. And now the new businesses will level that out. Um, there was an audit finding, uh, that we were lacking in formal records retention policy, so that was put into place at the meeting. Uh, we're just going to use Townes' record retention policy since they're going to work anyways. It makes sense for that. Um, other than that, that was the big part of the discussion was really the money coming in.
So that is a, I mean, that's one point nine million each of us.
Yep. Our distribution.
That's higher.
One point seven million.
Yeah, I think last time.
It just keeps going up.
Yeah, because it was like one point four seven million, so that's.
Yeah, twenty twenty four is one point seven billion.
One point seven?
Yeah. And then we had a two percent increase taking this to three point eight.
So that's almost two hundred thousand more and divided by three. Well, thirty percent, thirty, thirty for all of them. So they, so they did good. That's good enough to know that, so they can work their budgets.
Yeah, it was interesting too. We were talking about how they collect their money. They actually use Rita compared to what the Chem does.
I wish, I wish Chem would use Rita.
Well, I didn't know this, but Townes actually picks up the tab of Rita, so the JED isn't really paying that outside coming out of our disbursement.
That's good.
So, because it's just easier for them because Rita does all that work, which really helps us, you know, bring in a little bit of extra dollars.
Yeah, that's great. Well, I always wanted a, a JED cop, but I've, I've just never seen it work out.
Yeah, we talked about that. That was a question that was raised is what is Townes doing to put back into the JED what can happen? We had those discussions. Um, you know, it's the same issue, it's different coffee business, different jurisdiction, different county.
And just so everybody knows, I mean, anytime a city that, you know, scanner Townes would increase their income tax, that, that flows directly to the, to the, to us in the JED.
Right.
So. I know there were some questions about that, uh, you know, like Rick Barker was saying, you know, that, that tax was, was created just for PD and for fire for Townes, but.
Yeah, Townes, they ended up asking questions. Townes got an increase because they put a, uh, tax increase for the recent fire. But the way our JED agreement is written is that we pass whatever their tax rate is.
Right.
So we still collect that, uh, earmarked for a specific location. That's just what the JED.
Correct. Well, thank you, Nick.
Yeah, that's fine. And then I'll email those officers, see, see the financials, but, um, so it was good. And so a little bit of respect for that show.
That's great. Okay, meeting guests, we do not have any. Uh, minutes, I will make, I have a lot of minutes.
There's only one.
Well, the ones I haven't signed, which, which date on that? Are you one of you guys want to make?
Eleven thirteen.
I'll, I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
For eleven thirteen?
Yes. Very good meeting.
I'll second it. All in favor, Mike? Yes. Sue?
Yes.
Nick? I'll say. Motion passed. Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
How many motions accept the agendas presented?
Because you have an addition.
I, in a calm period, okay. So.
Um, we are going to add an executive session for, um, to discuss matters related to collective bargaining.
So it's PD, or it'd just be three under executive sessions over here, D?
Just three under executive sessions, PD? Collector bargaining?
Correct.
Need a second.
I'll second it. All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, well, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the purchase orders. I've reviewed them and signed them.
I'll second that. For our discussion, John, we need to make that for the purchase orders we signed today or two weeks ago.
No, it would just be for any purchase order. Right, so as, as of this date, all the purchase orders have been approved by that. All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, I'm also going to make a motion that I've reviewed and signed the warrants.
Second.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. Holly, do we have any public comments?
Nobody's saying anything.
Geez. Okay, is there any safety concerns other than the temperature tomorrow?
Is it supposed to snow tomorrow?
I don't know.
Today?
I got the weatherman across the street from me telling, telling me it's going down to high degrees.
Dead.
Okay, well, I guess if there's no safety concerns, let's, this party started. Uh, PD?
Okay, thanks, Mike. Uh, Tom Williams under whole business for the board this morning. Again, our top of the compliment is we meet this Saturday, but we meet at your community center at nine thirty. Uh, with our kids who will be taking shopping, they'll be caravaning over to Walmart for that event. I think we have around forty or so kids attending this year, so looking forward to that event. Uh, just to follow up again to our Polar Express event we had, uh, a week ago on Friday. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize a few people publicly for their work that they put into the day. Joe Raski in the event of Sunday's work, I want to recommend them and thank them again for allowing us to use that venue. Holly, Holly Distensity was very helpful, uh, very disruptive as well. Um, I explained to me the food, US Foods and Fort Nation with that. And, uh, Rochelle Stace, our administrative assistant, I just want to publicly recognize them and all of our staff and policy leaders that helped to make this, uh, a land success. It was, uh, it was a pleasure and it was really great. So I wanted to publicly recognize.
That was a great event.
For sure. Yeah, so I wanted to publicly thank some people for that.
With the big roaring fire, thankfully no one fell.
Yeah, nobody fell, that was just good. Yeah, keep an eye, keep an eye on that. Uh, update for the board, we just enacted children's service training for our officers last Saturday. Uh, that took place over at Fieldville School, uh, an all-day event for training for our officers and, uh, Officer Shannon's that way, there's our truck for that, so it was a good opportunity to get some service training in, uh, near the end of the year. I do have one item, uh, renewed business for approval, and I'm asking for approval for twenty twenty five records, uh, made this contract with Kansas University Department of Public Safety. That would be an amount of thirty thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars for the year. Our first half payment of fifteen thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents would be due in January. This is an annual contract we do with them, uh, who are, just wanted to ask you what the change may be from last year to the twenty twenty five, uh, agreement. Slight increase of about four hundred and fifty dollars.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five EPD records RMSA given by the University of Public Safety in the amount of thirty thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars?
Second that?
Still happy with the service there?
Yes.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, fire department.
Okay, uh, mine is information on, uh, only under new business. Uh, scan on the fire truck. Delivery will be this Saturday at Sunday the fifteenth to the fifteenth. Uh, I'll post the updates on our Facebook page. Uh, we did cut off gift deliveries yesterday. We do have a couple hundred stops that we'll have to go to, so we'll be pretty busy and active this weekend on that. Uh, new hires.
You said a couple hundred?
Yes. Yes, it's, uh, Holly and I were just discussing before the meeting, we're gonna make some tweaks.
Are you gonna, gonna have to rent another fire truck and another?
Well, I think what we're gonna have to do, since you asked, is my idea was taking like the Aldi-style bags that you get down there and you get a bag and what fits in your bag, that's it. So, because we're, we're delivering snowboards and some large items that we borderline appropriate. But, but now, they're, they're getting too big.
And he goes, right.
We're gonna have to tweak a couple things.
Sign him too.
But we love doing it, but it's, it's, uh, it's not fair to ask the guys to spend the weekend before Christmas, all weekend, because we'll be out eight hours on Saturday, so like six hours on Sunday, so. We'll make some tweaks.
That's crazy, Craig.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a good thing, but it's getting a little.
Out of the half.
A little bit much. Uh, new hires have moved on the ship, so we brought them along.
Every show goes back.
Now they're on the ship, they're, they're, uh, gonna be on currently and it's going good.
Sorry, Craig.
You're all right.
Okay.
Uh, the last thing I have is we did apply for the AFG grant, that, that's a federal grant. Um, we're, we're applying for a fire truck this year, a fire engine, um, probably just shy of a million dollars.
Wow.
Um, and if we are successful through the grant process, we would even match five percent of that. So it's what we're, if, if, if we get it, uh, we've always been successful through the grant writing company that we've used, um, and we do qualify because of the age of our engine to, to be in that category again, so.
Well, when, when would you know if you would receive that?
Probably about first of the year.
Okay.
And then, um, we would be in that same, it would be in this three-year process.
Have they, you knew any kind of indication of our chances or any of the prior?
Um, again, if I get, actual resources who've been used before, they, they did give us ambulance, they got us our redheads, they got us our SCBA air packs, so they've been very successful for us, uh, with just those three things, that's probably four hundred fifty thousand dollars if they've got us already. So, um, again, our equipment has to qualify in that round and needs to be twenty-five years or older for our twenty-six years on that fire engine, so we should qualify.
Okay, well, thanks for, going for that grant.
Yeah, um, um, it would, uh, it would put us ahead of the game if we could get that, so. Uh, that, that's all I have for this information.
Okay. But have you done the math on how many, how long it's gonna take you to go to a hundred homes a night?
Yeah, it's gonna take us like eight hours, then on Saturday and. We, we, we gotta do something.
You're gonna run out of ho-ho's before.
So, so in fairness to the guys, you, yeah, you get grouchy. You know, after the seventh hour of getting out of the truck, it's old, so we just, we're gonna have to tweak a couple things.
They're not gonna have to work out that day?
No, and whoever gets, uh, draws the shortest draw, being Santa that day, it's, uh.
Oh, my gosh.
A long hot day with a beard on.
Oh, my gosh.
That's a good person though.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Okay, Holly, add them in.
All right, so the installation of the lights for the burn field well, the signs were completed on Thursday, December fifth. So, uh, we changed those out from solar lighting, uh, because we were experiencing issues, of course, in the darkness. Um, so now, um, the signs will be lit at all times, it's no longer solar.
It's no longer solar?
Correct.
What is the little, uh, they still have the?
So, um.
It still looks like solar?
There, it, it's a different design and so they won't go out, and I have a, I have to look up what the, what the thing we ordered was, but it's a different design, so we should not experience any darkness if it's.
Right, I drove by it, uh, yesterday, but there is like a solar now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it is solar.
I'll have to, I honestly, it's been a few months since we did this and I can't remember what the design was.
Well, it works.
But it will not go out anymore like we've been experiencing with the current ones.
Yeah, it works. I think this other stuff looked like they just picked them up at Walmart.
Yeah, they were just little, yeah. They should, they should keep them lit.
Yeah, you can, you can read it, so it's good.
Yeah, good. Uh, open enrollment complete on Monday, December ninth. Thanks to, um, to the Department of Health, we need anyone completed.
I forgot that damn.
Um, we're, we're working on processing all changes for January first. Uh, and working with the prosecutor's office on resolution of necessity for the roads renewal levy, so we'll have that at our first meeting in January, uh, the targeted election period, uh, so that is just our renewal levy, um, and target election period is in May sixth, twenty twenty five. Uh, working with the prosecutor's office to, uh, getting to provide direction on the hotel tax, the liquidate payments and fines. So the Brett, I've asked him to come to the board in January, uh, for further discussion, and so he's putting together some recommendations for us on how we should handle that moving forward, put some policies in place and hopefully get to have him there to answer any questions as well. I'll reject the visitor's bureau as well, just to have a couple of things.
Holly, I don't need to jump on that, but is he gonna come up with a plan on how to do it? Recommendations don't, don't work. I mean, we've had that for years, he still don't pay. We need something from their office to beat them down and make them pay.
That's what this is for. That is, that was the purpose of this, it's to, for us to put a policy in place on what we're going to do, which entails taking it to the prosecutor's office and ending up in court.
Don't we have a policy out already?
Not that I'm aware, so our policy is that we charge them a late fee.
Right.
But we don't, we have not established a policy on what we do if they don't pay the late fee or if they're continuously delaying. So I went to Brett to say, hey, we have an issue, we have continuous delaying payments, and we have some that are never paying a late fee. They may come and pay their bill late, but they're not paying it. So I went to him to say, we need, we need something to be able, as you said, to put some teeth into this if they're not meeting the requirements. So that is what he's come to talk to us about, is to put a policy in place on how to handle it when they are not paying their late.
I, I, I get what he's telling you, but I've played this already before with another prosecutor and he said he couldn't do anything.
Oh, there's action, we just have to put a policy in place. So it entails taking them to court. Um, so he'll come and discuss the options, then be up to the board and, um, as to establish a policy so that we can handle it in court. But there is, there are actions that we can make.
All right, thanks.
Uh, new business, I, uh, we're looking to put a chain barrier up at the entrance by the car wash. So since we've been moved into the new building, quite a few of us have been caught where there's people cutting through, whether they're trying to avoid the intersection or whatever they're doing, but a few of us have almost gotten T-boned in the cars because people are flying through there to, to go around that corner. So I know, um, in talking with, um, Chief P, he's also had some concerns. So I wanted to bring it before you guys to put a barrier across that drive so you can like make that cut down, um, and hopefully avoid any, um, any accidents.
Soon needs to sign those.
We're gonna chime in there and add to that.
You have to sign those in soon needs to sign.
We, we were bringing out our, we're just gonna go off the back. Well, they're, they're cutting line, they're coming through your path and shooting up the ground in about forty-three.
Well, why aren't they going out the plaza exit?
They're coming up the plaza exit, no boys are blocking.
Well, why do we put a chain up? Why don't we just have a, a continuation of that, uh, cement pad when we get a chance and just get rid of it once and for all? I mean, a chain.
Maybe cut that off completely.
Yeah.
Um, I guess since you're asking, I would prefer keeping that as a, a exit and.
But if it's gonna be changed, that's not, if it's gonna be changed, it's not gonna be an exit.
Well, you would.
In an emergency, you could open it.
Yeah.
Couldn't we put a sign, watch where, no shortcutting? I don't know, just, I think chains look tacky.
Well, the thought was a gate would be a little too much, a chain would be a quicker removal.
Why don't we just buy the plaza?
Last week, you had a chance.
Yeah.
Not the plaza, the heck. Okay, well, I mean.
Isn't there consumers dedicated, real later to?
Yeah, we have to figure out, it is not, but it's not dedicated.
It was, years ago, it was just alleyway. It wasn't alley.
Just gonna get a bear and open a chain.
We had it, alleyway.
Can we put up a no shortcut sign?
We could, I just don't think that alone is gonna prevent anything.
I mean, that thing's been open, that thing's been open for years and years.
I don't know, we're just gonna see if it's not private property, you can put in a shortcut anywhere.
I think people need to be a little more careful.
Even speed on a private property.
I know, I just.
We just, we'll sit there and you'll see just the same cars going through that, and you're like, great.
My job is to put a big speed bump.
I mean, if you're cutting, you're cutting.
They're still gonna, it'll, it would still be better for them to cut through there and slow down over a speed bump than the way.
Whereas it are, I'm probably speeding down the parking lot when they almost get T-boned.
Oh, no way. They're just backing out, they're just trying to back out of this bump.
Yeah.
My only concern with it, I, I think, I'm not against it after work, is just are people gonna shortcut, uh, other driveway up to cut through it? So the, not going to do lots of, next to the gas station, then cut up and just cut through and get out. Cause now they have total clue, people are, they're looking to shortchange the street like.
Hey, we're government, we might as well do a twenty thousand dollar study available.
I think if you put the chain up, we can do an apple and horse and speed bumps down, we're done.
We get the most beautiful chain that we can.
Doesn't they have some big hunks of concrete?
No.
Hey, we got all those extra ones from the building, we just set those out there.
But the idea is, let's say there was a reason why fires couldn't get out there and we needed an emergency, you know, to block them off. Or even just like, you said, our vents, we have.
Well, the fire can go out front, they can go that way, the way they used to do. Now they go left, I don't know.
Well, we have a, we have a.
Well, we do have the options, one, left, right, out.
Okay, four.
Let's table that one though until we, we have other action on, on that. We have an executive session today, so.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks for bringing it up.
One thing on that though, can I, can I say something? It would be a breakaway chain, it's not like a log chain hanging across there. So it would be a breakaway chain just in case a mer- or if somebody would have hit it, you would not damage a vehicle and just snap.
No, that's great, now you put it out on YouTube, they're gonna be worried.
Well, that's, what YouTube did this.
And I would, going back to, I'd propose, I didn't want to wait, that's fine, but even with further discussions, that it would, we, we need something soon. So even if it's okay, something that's temporary and put up, I, I would like to do something just because it is an issue.
You drag that old Corvette up here, that's sitting behind your property, put that right there. Just got the one from the house. Sitting down. Okay, so, so are we gonna wait a minute?
Yeah, yeah, we have to.
Okay.
We can come back to it today, even.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Um, I, um, got an estimate, so when you come in the, I'll call it the back entrance, uh, the main entrance to the town hall, um, by the, um, boardroom, there is a, a, I'll call it a flower bed, but it's a landscaping bed, which has a very big slope. And so we talked about wanting to put a railing there, just because we find that people try and shortcut and walk through the stones and it's just, it, it, it has some safety concerns. If someone were to walk down there and get in those rocks, it just all falls down and becomes a slip hazard. Or if someone were trying to enter the building and was fall, we're looking to put a railing or something there just to keep it more safe and secure.
I think that's a great idea.
Yes, so I have the, there's a sheet in your packet that has some pricing for, um, and, uh, absent instance railing, so three different, um, three different designs, so I'll talk about that one, that's another option, but the picture that's in on that sheet there, that is the type of railing that we have in the, um, stairs and the, um, posted to forty-three. So they leave us a quote for that, that type of railing was just, which is just aluminum. Um, they can also do that same style, but it will be steel and it would be powder coated black. Or we could look at it in an ornamental aluminum railing, which would be included in that booklet there. I'm not sure that we need to go fancy for this. Um, my recommendation would be that we either stay with the aluminum or go with the powder coated black. Um, I did, so that's the aluminum.
Yeah, powder coated black would be nice.
That's what I was thinking as well, just to cover up. I did ask them, I said, if we went with the powder, excuse me, powder, powder coated black, does that entail much more maintenance? And they said, generally not, if there were some words to damage the railing, it could, you know, get water in there and peel off, but it's gonna be twenty plus years before we would ever have.
Well, that powder coating is strong.
Yeah, that's a, I just wanted to make sure, because it's not my expertise, and he said, no, you shouldn't have it.
I'm pretty sure that's baked on, if I.
It's similar to that style, where it takes a lot to damage or it doesn't peel off in any type of short time, um, but I just wanted to verify that, and wasn't looking to get anything that required any painting or maintenance. Um, so yeah, so those are the options before us, um, but yeah, I think either the aluminum or that powder coated black would be sufficient, look nice, and I agree, I like the powder coated black.
Yeah, so are you looking for a motion?
Um, yes, so if you guys are good looking at it, then we would need a.
For what? For twenty-five, I'm not gonna, we can't do it now. We just have to make sure it's a twenty-five expenditure.
That's fine, I can wait, I'll wait till then.
You can make a motion now, just, it won't.
Yeah.
We're not purchasing, you can put it in motion, yeah.
You asked a question, we want to power this thing, the dirt, we said, not that.
So it was depending on the railing type, um, there was a different way to do it, so if we go to that powder coated black, it would be fabricated to be set in the dirt, and that was their recommendation, because you lose, um, you lose some, you say, you do it in the dirt. That's what their recommendation on that.
Well, I wouldn't want to put it in this, in this cement, because you're gonna lose wheelchair access. You're gonna have sixteen inches that you're gonna use to make that wheelchair accessible.
Yeah, so that's the note in your sheet, you use about six to eight inches posting it on that concrete.
Yeah, I know, you know, the property, I, I mean, we, we ended up doing powder coating and stuff, but I mean, the problem we had was how long it took to get it installed, seeing like fence companies are dressed, they put behind that hip and some of this stuff, so it might not be a bad idea, you know, get it ordered, you know, you know, I don't know. But I understand John not wanting to do it till twenty twenty-five, so.
I would let him know, I would just call, contact them and let them know the timing of.
Yeah, he'd find out the time.[1640.61]
Yeah, he didn't indicate any concerns with that, that, all the work right then.
Well, from the book perspective, we just need to make, if you want to pass a resolution today, just say for completion in February of twenty-five. That's all I need out there. Then that'll all work. Then you can schedule it.
This is the final cost that's in here?
Yes.
Which would be the final cost?
Fifty-six. Fifty-six would be the second, right?
Five thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars.
Fifty-five, sixty.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the installation of railing of the administration entrance. And the cost not to exceed five thousand six hundred dollars, uh, to be installed in February of twenty twenty-five.
I'll say.
Does that work, John?
Yep. Do you get a second?
Yes.
Sue, second.
I second.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, and then, um, officially, this is our last trustee meeting here in this beautiful community center. So in January, we'll officially be holding our meetings in the town hall. So the trustee organizational meeting will be held on Monday, January sixth, um, twenty twenty-five at eight AM at the town hall. And then our inventory meeting will be held on Ja- Monday, January thirteenth, um, at eight AM at the town hall. And, uh, of course, with that organizational meeting, we'll, uh, both honor meetings for twenty twenty-five, but you should be in our room.
Okay, I heard that now. Trustees have to wear suits and formal.
I forget fancy.
Over the tail.
Well, really with that thing, all we have to do is have a good shirt and a coat on.
That's all you see. You wear your day of hands.
Okay, well, good.
And I do have one item for our approval, um, looking for approval to purchase a Camen TM three fifty-five color water, uh, scanner at an amount actually to see ten thousand five hundred ninety dollars. And you have in your packet, um, some information on that item if you have any questions for us.
So I'd like to make a motion just for the discussion of the purchase of the unit TM three fifty-five color water scanner not to exceed ten thousand five hundred and twenty-five.
She does. We just need to put February twenty-second, or twenty, twenty-five in there as well.
Alright, so you want an amendment to say February twenty-five?
Yeah, just so we purchase it then out of twenty-five. Okay.
So is this the water that we talked about?
So yeah, this is, this is the lowest price I have, uh, for bindings I need for cracking scanning. This is for brokers. We spend, I don't know, John, how much do we spend a year?
Oh, there's a lot. I think we even had a list of them. It's easily twenty-five hundred dollars or so a year just right now with years moving only. Well, and we can use it for park stuff too, so we can cut out on some of that expenditure.
Cassie can use it actually probably more than I can, cause it does make signs, it gets you to hang everything else.
Yeah, um, I did a little calculation. We spent about twenty-three hundred dollars on banners and signage and core class signs, all those things last year. Um, so this would be something we could do in-house now, um, which with some cost savings, um, there's also the additional benefit of the time factor. Because usually you have to order these signs conservatively a week out, or not conservatively, conservatively a week out, two weeks is usually better. Um, I know for Brimfest, there was one instance where we had to have a rush charge of a hundred dollars because there were last minute changes to the signage. It had to be rushed. So having that in-house would be a big benefit to us. And so we could do vinyl banners. You could do your core class signs with the signs we have over there. We could do those in-house. Um, and it would just save us a lot of time and money and effort.
I heard you utilize a machine of stuff to.
Probably I just, I don't know what I did.
I'm gonna tell you today, I, I didn't know.
Cause we have a lot of mine too. We tried again. So we can try to, now we're saying, we're, we'll, we'll need, we'll need to, our kids can see it all.
So and, and as part of the, well, they come out and train on it, so if we did give, the department heads a heads up, if one of we get the training on it, we'll invite everybody just so they can know what's available. So as things come up through here, they can utilize it as well.
Joe, from a technology standpoint, that's gonna add more storage coming in. Do we have the capabilities to internally store all this data then?
Yeah, I mean, eventually what we, we do is you'd scan it and then you'd move it into your department's, uh, OneDrive. So it's still gonna be, it'll ultimately be cloud storage, which we, we already paid for. Um, so there's no concerns there.
Is there redundancy to the cloud storage?
What do you mean?
So like we, I just don't want them storing plans that we have to keep indefinitely in something that's, that's the file, right? Is there really a big backup and capture that file?
Oh, we, we paper back services for OneDrive. So we have, we have, we use Barracuda, which is also doing our email archiving, also backs up OneDrive. So OneDrive is, you know, Microsoft and its, you know, cloud service, but then we utilize another provider to also back it up. So I, I don't have any issues with that.
Thank you. I just wanted to try, just wanted to make sure.
Thanks for explaining that. I had no one to do with.
Beer.
It's good. At this one, I, I will ask that they give us the year-end pricing. And I did call them and say, hey, like, we would be able to commit to it, we would be able to pay them for that, just for funding purposes. So I don't know if we, we need to wait till February or we do it in January.
Well, we just, we have to get into the two thousand twenty-five year. We just won't have our draw until the end of January. So if they want, we can pay them in February.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's all that we, yeah, I mean, we can do, it has to be in twenty-five though.
Sure, of course.
So.
No further questions?
Have we, oh, I think we all did that. That's what we did. All those in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. I must've been hearing something else.
Yeah, I thought I lost my mind.
drank too many things at the same.
Okay, thank you. Mike, sir.
Thanks. Uh, permanent fee today was a hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight, eight, four, six, eight. Uh, old business, uh, dates, uh, barbecue. Received phase approval on the permits and then begun clearing some of the trees and starting to put our work. Uh, Hill Church has started praying for a new addition of its night. I've seen that guy come and pass it through the chomper. It looks really good. Uh, new business, the plan reviews for discount drug bar for the elementary school. O-Dub has approved the, the signal, it's a sign there, it's actually a signal. And I have all people around that, but they denied the curb cut on forty-three, so they want their access points on Docking Drive. Not on forty-three, because you have a, a turn lane, a right turn lane as you go there. And that, uh, they even seek the very floor to hold a lot more. So all access points have to be off Docking and you're gonna be with Ron again to go for that.
So they'll access where the light is, they'll turn there?
Turn, turn there, but then the access points in will be off of Docking. But yeah, the line will be there, actually. Um, they're working, redoing their, their drawings, cause they gotta be able to enable deliveries. And I gave them some, some thought processes on how to get that. So we're, because at first they had coming in, it's about the drive and coming out on forty-three, but that's where O-Dub was like, no, we're not doing that. So they actually configured. And then, uh, Brimfield Town Center plan, that, that was auctioned off. We have a new owner. Uh, he's trying to do with me this week, so hopefully we can, we can sit down and go over some of the options, but I, I heard he wants to redo it. He doesn't want to knock it down unless we're for this.
So he should be starting relatively soon, you think?
I don't think so.
Okay, is that about?
I just have one. David, that, uh, my number fourteen, that home inspection, is that another building that's being built next to Rico's?
Yeah, that's gonna be a new building. Uh, they're, they're funding and everything they're doing will, will take place till this next year.
Where their parking lot is or in that other, isn't that Phil down there?
All the way by the creek. So it's gonna be a slab. We're gonna have to spread borders. The soils are kind of bad in that location.
That's all Phil there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I just trying to figure out where it was.
That plaza that's gonna go on the cross from McDonald's, anything on that yet?
Yeah, and he asked the fees, uh, last night and I sent it off the buyer as well.
You did what?
They, they're asking how much the fee were gonna be and they're gonna be spending the fee this week for the plaza. So, uh, but it, it was a regional planning, the replat's good. I signed off on that. Um, yeah, we're ready to go.
That's gonna be, how many units?
Uh, fifteen in total.
So that's gonna be a big plaza?
Yeah.
Good size.
Yeah. Instead of just a hundred twenty-two thousand worth for it.
That would mean a lot of retail space.
Well, especially if the other plaza has it. Now we're gonna have two plazas.
Wow.
Yeah. A lot of cars gonna do forty-three, though. You still have about forty-three thousand vehicles a day traveling through there, so you're doing a lot of travel.
How many thousand per day?
Four thirty-nine.
Forty-three thousand a day of forty-three.
How close the sheets have been? They've been suspended a day.
Very close, yeah. They haven't given me an announcement on, uh, if the signal's out.
They were, I think there's, they had a food or a vendor moving stuff in this morning. There was a truck.
Power to the pumps and stuff already.
They put all the tables up.
It's getting lit up under high last night.
Are they gonna have a grand opening or?
Yeah, they will. So I'm, I'm in, uh, in touch with their attorney. She's been here several times, uh, pretty frequent meetings, but yeah, she'll.
Yeah, I hear they have great food. A certain trustee wanted to know what they're gonna be serving at it. I said, I didn't know.
It's twenty-four hours a day, though. You can go through the drive.
Whenever you want.
I think it's all, I think it's all cooked right away. It's, uh, yes.
Maybe you order, there's like a touchscreen, you order whatever you want. I think he, we're gonna have to make that signal up though, or I think I'll try to.
Any idea when they're gonna put that signal up or?
It's approved, I don't know, so, yeah.
So relatively soon, you think?
Yeah, before they open, so.
I mean, everything's set up inside.
Yeah.
So I just have a question on forty-three with that other entrances. That's an, an entrance only, right? It's not an exit out onto forty-three?
That's, um, right in, right out. Uh, she's.
Oh, she can go, you can turn right getting out of it. Okay.
Turn right out, but there's a left turn.
Okay, okay.
They allowed it there, but that was just in, it was a little bit further back than what drug bar is, cause drug bar's right on that corner. They couldn't push the drive in, rip it back, uh, just to deny their access.
Okay, all right.
That's great. Great news. Okay, well, thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Uh, Dave?
Uh, yeah, just a few things. Uh, all of our dump trucks are back from, uh, getting checked out at PSI. Got oil changes, grease. They did find a few things, mainly just wiring issues, where we had some, some stuff starting to rot out a little bit on the older trucks. Uh, which was all taken care of already. So it's all fixed. Everything's up to go, ready for winter. Uh, some new business. We had to send the new dump truck back to PSI. We had a battery issue. It's already been taken care of. It's back in the shop again now, ready to go. Uh, we've been looking, uh, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now, but, uh, starting to review some new shop designs from, uh, one. So we, he gave me a couple of things. He's gonna tweak it a little more and then we'll come back with a little something to show everybody what we're looking at. It's just mainly a big pole building. Again, going back to about eight bay pole building with some office space and, uh, coffee room for the guys. So we're looking into that. He's gonna revamp the plans after meeting him talk a little more. Uh, just some odds and ends. We were out, we clogged roads, uh, soldered a couple of times here in the last few weeks. Uh, we did some coal mixing and just some other miscellaneous stuff, just fixing things here and there. I need the board's approval. Well, uh, what we're, what we're getting ready to do is we're getting ready to have a couple more roads dedicated to the township. And, uh, just as the notification under for Port County Commissioners from the engineer's office. Uh, we're getting ready to have, uh, the rest of Maple Crest Parkway dedicated to us. We're getting ready to have, uh, Brimfield Ridge Circle, which is runs along in front of Aldis from cul-de-sac to cul-de-sac. That'll be dedicated toward us. And Parliament Drive, which that was part of the process of putting all that in. We'll have a piece of Parliament Drive to Brimfield Crossing. So it's just a few little bit pieces here and there, but that, they were looking at having it, uh, dedicated toward us, uh, January sixteenth of twenty twenty-five.
That's what we decided.
And that's, I had you guys sign.
You guys need to accept the road dedication for those three roads in a motion.
Is it accepting or is this just sending a letter to the commissioners right now?
That's, well, we're doing that, but you're just accepting that we had them and that they're public.
So we're, we're just saying we approve the letter to go to the commissioners right now. And then we'll accept the roads of the, on that, I made.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we approve.
We just want to approve the accepting of the road dedication. Is that how you want to say?
I would say we're making a motion to send a letter to the commissioners approving the acceptance of the roads.
Maple Crest Parkway, Brimfield Ridge Circle on Parliament Drive. All right. Okay, we need a second.
I'll say that. Cause then John will, we'll accept the roads when the next letter comes back from that engineer.
Right, no, I get it. I, I, the document we just signed was the.
Was us not submitting to the commissioners. This is our chance to say, hey, commissioners.
All right, well, we'd, we approved the notification letter. That's what we should put in there. Okay.
Prove the notification.
All right.
And Dave, like we talked about, you're good, the roads are in good shape. There's no concerns that we need to address the commissioners.
Yep, they've already took a look at them. The county's also looked at them again. Everybody's looked at them. The few little things they had, they, they fixed up. So. They've added new parking signs, that kind of stuff that we were looking for and all that, so.
Okay, all those in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Uh, just one last little tidbit. You may see the salt trucks out this afternoon. It's not because of the amount of snow will get through this, it's the amount of how cold it's gonna get. So we might be, I'm gonna monitor, so we may put some salt down to keep from a reef freeze where you get black ice. So that's not, it's one of them, it's again, it's one of them things that you kind of sway towards safety first, cause one, I don't wanna fifteen ton dump truck going down the road on ice, so. So unless even the residents, I don't want somebody hitting the black ice and taking off the road either. So it is one of them. I mean, I normally get complaints from residents. Because what are you doing? But it, it, there is a method to my madness on this, so just, uh, put it out there a little bit. And I heard that concludes my report.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
Okay, Cassie?
Great. Um, some old business. I have some updates on Maguire Park. The driveway and parking lot project is now complete. And we have a new address for that property. It is now thirty-eight twenty-two Cascades Boulevard. And then I am currently getting quotes, uh, for my management for twenty twenty-five. There was a price increase, um, that I was sent yesterday from the third company that we use. So I'm just doing some shopping to see if there's, um, some comparable prices out there. And then I'm also getting some quotes for lake studies and lake mapping, um, as part of getting the lake ready for kayaking and fishing when we decide to open that park. Um, there is a broken slide at the Lions Park Playground. Uh, it's supposed to be broken by, it, it didn't look to be an accident. Uh, there's a very large hole in the slide. Um, it's like someone probably jumped on it. Um, so it is beyond repair, so we will be looking at replacing that. And we got a quote for thirteen hundred and forty dollars for that. Um, because it's winter, um, we've just blocked it off for now. We'll be replacing that in the spring. Um, it makes sense to put a new slide out there at this time of year, so.
You put that slide in, it was probably twenty-two years ago.
Oh, this is the newer playground.
Oh, the newer playground. Yeah, I was saying.
This section's the new section of the new playground.
I was gonna say, that was.
Yeah. Oh, I wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah, I thought you're, I thought you're eventually gonna get rid of that, cause it's not up to snuff.
Well, that's a conversation for me and Dave.
That's what we're looking at the book.
Right, okay.
Would it be possible to actually remove it now instead of just blocking it off?
We can, yeah. Um, it's.
I think that might be safety better.
Yeah. Do we wanna do that?
Okay, I got chainsaw.
Okay.
I mean, it's shot.
I mean, it, I mean, will, will kids walk off or there used to be the.
It's fine, concerning, is, is that leaving an opening there where kids could just, there's no slide?
It's blocked up on the top and then.
It, it is blocked up with snowpans right now, but I guess on the side of that, if a kid did rip the snowpans down, then you have a hole there. So it's either leave, the thing's all taped off and.
And then the slide there, at least it creates some.
Just, yeah, they do have a.
Or you gotta get a piece of plywood that went over the opening and bolted on there.
Uh, and now you might drill new holes. You know what I mean, in the other.
Yeah, I didn't know that was a way to detach it.
So it's either we screw some holes into the plastic now, or just leave as is and see what happens. I mean, another slide down, it gets stuck in a hole. I mean, it's either way, however you guys want. I mean, I can take it down, we can put some plywood. It's, it's how, you, I guess you wouldn't wanna take the slide off and rely on the safety guns.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, so it'd have to be one way or the other, either leave the slide or take and screw in a piece of plywood.
I would prefer back to you and Cassie to say whatever you think is safest. You make that professional decision.
You have a caution tape, isn't safe with a little two-year-old.
Although, I got a warning tape.
Yeah.
All right, and then, um, I'm working on our year-end report right now, compiling all of our program information and rental information, all that good stuff. And then past program updates on December first, we had hometown Christmas at the town hall. Thank you, everybody, for helping with that. Um, I think it went really well and I was excited to see that back at the town hall. So thank you. And thank you, Chick, for doing the, uh, tree lighting. We really appreciate that.
Those lights are amazing.
Yeah, they're really good.
I almost felt like I was an ogilvy for a minute, if you look just like this.
And, um, I know I got a couple of reports from people that some of the lights, the timing was off recently, like they were on, uh, not on late at night or something like that. I did call Marcus. He came out yesterday and adjusted those timers. He thinks it was because of the heavy rain and snow that we got recently.
Oh, they're beautiful.
Yeah, and he's really responsive. If there's ever an issue, just let me know.
Why let them know? Let them know, though. They're nice.
Oh, I will. And then.
The timidity scene is up. Thank you, Dave.
Yes.
Took a few extra screws, but it's a.
It's in rough shape, though.
Is it mainly metal now?
Uh, well.
All the screws?
There's not screws in there.
Um, and then yesterday Hannah attended the career fair at Southeast High School. Um, she said it was really successful and there's a lot of people interested, um, in parks. And she had one person that might be interested in doing an internship with us, so that's really exciting. She was happy to go back to her alma mater and spread the gospel of Brimfield Park, so thank you, Hannah. And then, um, I wanted to bring this up for discussion. I don't know if this is something we want to discuss today or think about and bring back next time. But, um, Brimfest twenty twenty-five, uh, we had had some proposed dates out there of either, um, Friday eight-eight or, and Saturday eight-nine, But, um, Brim Fest twenty twenty-five, uh, we had had some proposed dates out there of either, um, Friday eight-eight or, and Saturday eight-nine. Or Septem-, um, Friday nine-twelve and Saturday nine-thirteen. Um, it did come to my attention that how much Circle Fest is going to be that weekend of eight-eight and eight-nine, so it'd be my recommendation to avoid that weekend. Um, so I would suggest going with the weekend of nine-twelve and nine-thirteen.
And then we're back into September again.
Yes, yeah. And I did.
I don't, I don't know.
Did we get an update on the ride yet? Have any rides companies?
They have not gotten back to me yet. Yeah.
Cause I mean, that's why we're holding on the dates because we wanna be able to.
Well, you have.
Work with that.
You have one company that said they're not even gonna let you know till spring.
And that seems to be how it's going. It's usually early spring. They'll get back to you. And that also kind of goes with the bigger discussion of this is that we need to have a location for this event. And also kind of decide where we're going with this event because we can't really have an event without a location.
And I was talking to Holly yesterday. I mean, we, we got a lot of road up, up at the new town hall. I mean, I think if we could figure out a way to use some of that, I don't know.
Well, the original vision, when we put the soccer fields and the athletic fields in, was that power ward was placed there with the idea of shutting down that road. So that the rides could be on that road. Cause there's more than enough powerful rides. Then there's water lines there. If we had the weak unders that needed the water tap.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it'd be great to have it down there. Just, what I'm worried about is that if you have that rain and then that, that grass is just so wet.
Well, no, not putting the rides on the grass, but putting them on the road themselves.
Just put the food trucks.
Kind of like Ravenna does with Bullet Affair, right? So then you can walk up and down the road. And if Council House still wants to partner with us, you could wrap it into that property there, but you have all of that property and you just shut down the roadway.
I, I, I think that's a great idea.
Right? You shut it down right at where the athletic field is ending, going back to the new condos, so that traffic can still flow out to eighteen. And then you have that hallway down up to the library that we can be in.
Yeah, I mean, if you can just walk on concrete or asphalt, it's a whole lot better than walking through bush.
And that was the whole idea was that from there, and if we had to put some stuff on the field, you could, but not the, not the rides, not the food trucks, not the heavy things. But you could potentially put whatever else out there.
Yeah, give you, it was good. Give you, you know, a place for a bigger venue like that.
We just gotta look, where do you put the fireworks at at that point?
Yes.
Cause you can't do it down.
So that brings, the idea that I have, and I don't know the cost of it, so Cassie, I guess I would give this back to you to see the cost. There's another city that's not doing fireworks this year. They're doing the drone light show instead.
Yeah, I.
So it gets rid of the, the shooting and all that, right? Now we just go to the drones and make them launch from anywhere.
Chris, Anna and I have already discussed drone shows, cause we think it's an awesome idea. And I think I have gotten some quotes in the past that they were very high, so I didn't bring them to the board. Um, but yes, we'd be interested in looking at. And if I could jump in, in anticipation of this conversation, I did make a spreadsheet that had some of these pros and cons of different locations. Um, and things like that, so, um, and, and pros and cons of moving the date, like weather wise and other conflicting events and that thing. So I don't know if this is, this might be something we wanna bring back to another meeting.
At, at any of those dates, we're gonna have a conflicting date in one place or another. And I don't think, I mean, there's probably a small majority, a small group of people that go down to Talmage. But we don't go because it's such a pain to, to park down there.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I mean, I think we just do, do our own thing and if it doesn't work, you guys can change it at another time. I don't know.
I think my only concern with Circle Fest is just cause we're in a jet with them, supposed to be partners. I hate the new.
Yeah.
Any other weekend, if it was Bullet Affair or whatever else, it is what it is. I just wouldn't wanna compete with Kent or Talmage.
I'd just like to see us get away from September.
Right.
Well, since, um, um, Mr. Ned is going to have a meeting with the new owner of the plaza over here, maybe you could discuss with them parking issues?
Yes.
For the, for the Brick Fest?
Yeah, and there's just a lot of moving pieces right now with that plaza, cause, um, even if we did wanna have, say, we wanna have the event at the soccer field, there's still the issue of parking. We don't know if this new person would allow parking there. If they didn't, then I don't know.
They've parked there over years, though. They can't stop.
So I won't have to say anything. I mean, if he's wanting to do a event, I'd like to propose he's meant for to allow for our events. Um, the other thing to consider if you want to go on roads is that you have the new apartments back there. Mandatory to have two points of access.
So that's why we wanna cut it right there. So when they come out, they couldn't turn right, but they could turn left and go up to Town Road. Right? So you end it right there.
You'd have to watch a Cleveland Clinic. You'd have to watch Block and M Office. They do still have office hours Friday night. Cause that's normally why we can't shut down, uh, Council Drive right now, is at a Cleveland Clinic.
So we might just have a conversation with them. They might be willing to be a little more appeasing to the situation, especially if it's a public outreach piece.
Uh, but that's, that'd be the only business we got to have, because Pizza Hut's always worked with us and so is the Veterans Office. Shutting down them, you know, out points of theirs on the council.
Yeah.
Cleveland Clinic was the only one who got a little anty with us the one year, cause I shut the road down and then people couldn't figure out how to get their appointments.
And I think if we have a discussion early with them, we might wanna make that connection now with Cleveland Clinic just to see.
Yep.
Cassie, do we know when the twenty twenty-five homecoming fair is?
We do, uh.
The other issue we're running to is we won't know when football homecoming games and stuff will be so closer in a year.
It's the nineteenth through twenty-first of September.
Interesting.
One's off to a good rest.
It's always the first weekend of September.
Oh, yeah.
Dave, when do the, the high school football games start?
That's what Kramer's just saying. They should schedule them in January, February.
Yeah, they, they, the first one starts like the second week, second, second to the last week of all.
That's right.
Cause they always start like the week of the Randolph Fair.
Okay.
Or the week before, depending on when the fair week falls, so. It's a matter of where you're gonna compete with.
Somebody.
Right.
You don't wanna compete with the fair.
No.
So.
We'd lose to the fair.
Yeah, we would.
But, uh, yeah, they, they won't come out with a schedule for like homecomings and all that stuff until January, September.
I mean, we're waiting on the rides anyways, so maybe we just hold off on setting that date. To me, I think if this is ever gonna be successful again to the, to the level that we had before, is we gotta try to get a ride vendor back in.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that's, and I'd rather us move a date around to meet the needs of that ride vendor that's willing to do a three-day event instead of a week-long event. Then pick a date, be locked into it, and then miss out on those rides.
Sure.
And that's the biggest complaint I hear from the community is they want the rides back. It doesn't feel like a festival anymore than it used to be.
Yeah.
Then once we get the ride back, it'll all be complaining about how expensive they are.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and that's, that Cassie and I have been talking, you know, back to kind of what's the goal, because it's always been a pretty family-friendly, very inexpensive to no cost, you know, event to attend. But with rides, are we going to pass some of that expense on to cut down our costs or are we looking to?
Specifically in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, wait, didn't they have the rides share, there was some problem, like with the?
We got like, they got like ten percent of it is what they got.
But it was never.
Regulated.
We couldn't really audit it. It was, it was just a handshake kind of thing and they'd bring money to the chamber and that was it. And I, I don't remember. It was what, a couple of thousand bucks?
Yeah, we didn't have anything to do with the rides though, but it got, it was expensive ten years ago. I mean, so it'll just go back to that.
People just choose what they wanna do. They do rides they don't do. I think we still ought to offer some things, the rides, and I'm part of the ride companies making the money.
And I mean, there was never a shortage back when we had a ride company. They always wanted to come back, so that was telling you one thing, they're making money.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, it's, I'm with you. I mean, the, the blowups are fine, but they're not like having a Ferris wheel going around or something.
I mean, my kids honestly are bored after an hour.
Yeah.
I'm bored after half an hour.
You can only walk around and eat so much food, so.
What else? Those Italian sausage are good this year.
Hot turkey was good too.
So, but yeah, I think we should, in my opinion, the rides are the important piece. We, if we make that happen, that's deference for our best back.
Yeah, and people aren't, I mean, I, I agree. People, you know, they're, as soon as we give them a date, they'll be fine with it. I mean, more.
As long as we stay away from homecoming.
Yeah, it's just, you know, but with the sooner the better, cause we do need to get lock-in food vendors and stuff.
Yeah.
Right. So, so maybe we need to probably do help Cassie pressure the ride companies a little bit. I mean, I'm sure they're signing contracts with other areas already, right? Because they're gonna not go all winter, not know that they're making money next year.
I'm assuming they start out with the bigger fairs and festivals and then kind of work their way down.
Yeah, but I think we pressure them a little bit, maybe it helps us.
You are telling them Brimfield's the center of Ohio.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, you gotta sell the, sell the town.
What I'm concerned about is how do we get the interest of our residents to participate?
Was to attend the event?
Yeah.
I think if you start advertising the rides and the music, that's gonna change it. People right now, I think more people come than we realize, but they're in and out fast. There's never a large crowd like it used to be. People stay for an hour instead of staying for multiple hours. So there's this constant.
I just, this felt so bad. The township has invested so much money in this community event, and then we have what, twelve, thirteen thousand people here? And then I would like to see more people come out and be interested in, in what we're trying to provide.
And I think the rides are bringing that attraction too, because it's, it's the flashing. People see it when they drive by. They're not, right now they just see tents and they're like, oh, there's the music and they head on down the road.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Okay, and then, um, new business, we have, um, scrapbooking coming up on the twelfth at the library from one to three. Um, we have the tour of lights, uh, voting period opening up on the fourteenth. We've got the signs stacked up over there. We're gonna put those out this week. And we're gonna get the, just got the list of all the addresses. I'm gonna get that out hopefully today or tomorrow. Um, we have our Christmas Audubon bird count at Maguire Park, um, this weekend, Sunday at eight AM. That's the, um, where we record birds for the Audubon Society for their, um, citizen science program. And then we have our New Year's Eve.
How many, how many are you gonna be doing that? You and Anna or?
Hannah and I, and then we invite the public to come too. So we just do a survey of how many birds are on the property and then we send that information to the Audubon Society.
How long do you do it?
Uh, I think we're just doing like an hour. Yeah, it's a yearly thing. Um, they do it throughout, um, North America. And everybody reports all of their bird sightings just to get, um, an inventory of what species are where.
Okay.
And then, uh, we have our New Year's Eve program, um, from ten AM to twelve PM. Uh, we did move this to the town hall. Um, since we were concerned about the size of the program. This is on, um, a date that the library is closed, so. We were like, we don't know how many people we would fit in that room, so we will be moving it to the town hall meeting room.
Not spilling champagne all over the place or grape juice.
The, the champagne will be out of.
The grape juice will be all over the.
No, it's gonna be the clear.
That's ten AM to twelve PM?
So yes, it's New Year's Eve, so it's for the kids, um, that can't stay up till midnight, so it's like a daytime New Year's program.
Well, that's true.
Okay.
Um, usually like the elementary school program.
Boat them up with chocolate and send them home?
Exactly, yeah. Yes, and we'll be doing our little New Year's toast. We'll be doing a balloon drop. Um, we'll have some stuff on the TV, a little countdown thing and yeah, some crafts and games and things like that.
Have you started advertising for it?
We have, yep.
Any luck or interest?
Yep, we've got, I think our event page had like a hundred and fifty people interested, so, yeah. And then, um, I will not be here on the sixth for the organizational meeting, because I will be graduating from Franklin University with my Masters of Public Administration on the fifth. So I will have family in town, so I will not be here. And that is all.
Okay, that's great. Congratulations. Okay. Okay, Joe.
Um, I just got some updates. Um, on Monday, I assisted Captain Atkins, uh, with the installation of their new CAD. He refers to the CAD system, New World. I know it's New World, but, um, and that went, I think, well, we had a few hiccups, but Captain Atkins and I worked well together, so. We plowed through and got that done. Um, as far as I know, that has been working fine. Um, and then most of the AV in our new room is installed. Um, the installation company did run into a problem with the live streaming cameras. Um, so they weren't able to get those working, but they will be back out this week to finish the install, so we're still on track on my end to have our first meeting in January. Um, hopefully by the end of this week, we should have everything in place, but the audio and the, the video is working. I, uh, tested that out yesterday. Um, so we should have our live streaming cameras up soon and we'll be good to go. That's all I've got.
Hey, uh, with, with the, our digital sign.
Yes.
I know I'm getting more mature, it's my age, but I, I can't read it. You can't read it either?
Okay.
It's just not fine. It's not, I mean, I, when I get, when I pull up to the interchange, I can sort of read it, but God, from back there, it's, can we make it finer or?
I, we may, I need to, we may have to look into putting less information in more slides. I'm trying, I'm trying to make it so that everything fits on one screen. Um, but I think we need to go with.
Yeah, my wife, who never agrees with me, said the same thing. She can't read it.
Yeah, I, I need to start using a larger font and instead of trying to get everything on one screen, have it split into two.
Yeah, maybe you're trying to put too much.
Colors too. Sometimes certain colors are just harder.
Yeah, I've, I've been using feedback from people and going with more higher, with newer slides, I'll go with more of a high contrast color. Um, staying away from.
Or maybe.
There's an article out there somewhere that talks about like using the color combination.
Yeah.
You know, winner cops or colors. I'd rather things that are easier for people to read based on color blindness, based on, I feel like we need to see that contrast.
Yeah, just some, maybe less pictures and more real brief messages or some. I just, it's so hard to see. And I did get my eyes checked before this, but they're good.
Yeah, so yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll work on with new stuff, trying to get.
Yeah, I know you're, you're trying to do a good job. You know, if you could just maybe, maybe not so much, you know? I don't know. Maybe next time we need a big sign, like a.
Well, I was trying to stay with the existing brick pillars. I, the, one of the quotes I received was to put in a complete new sign, because it is a, an odd shape. Um, but switching the technology, but I was, to keep the cost out, I want to stay with the existing brick, cause the brick that was holding the sign up was in great condition. There was no reason to replace it. So when we ordered this sign, we stuck with the length. We increased the height by twelve inches, but the width, so it is a, it is an odd shape. So all of your standard images that people use don't fit on that sign, so everything I create is custom, so.
What did we do with the old sign?
It was not.
Not worth saving.
Yeah, no, there, it was mostly dead. That's why we replaced it. Uh, we looked into the cost of refurbishing it for use of parks.
Cause I thought, yeah.
But it, it was several thousand dollars just to fix it and that was, there was no guarantee, no warranty. There was, we would be putting money into it and not knowing how long it was gonna last, so it wasn't, it, it wasn't really a vibe of watching.
Fifteen years old.
Right, right.
Yeah, it just, there was.
Well, whenever this one dies, you guys.
Just getting part of it.
You guys know to consider, when this one dies, get.
Yes. Yeah, I, I get, well, hopefully this one will last equally long and then in fifteen years, then we'll go much bigger.
Well, hopefully you're still here and you remember that, cause you'll be.
Maybe by then we'll have holograms and.
We'll all be gone. Well, maybe next year, he'll still, can still be here.
See.
And so, yes.
Okay, well, thanks for trying. I, I know you're trying. I don't wanna, I'm not saying this.
No, and I, and I have gotten very positive feedback from the community on, on trying to update stuff. Um, Joe from Joe's Barbecue is giving me some feedback. He's got a great view of the sign.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, cemetery. You got a year-end report?
Yeah, so did you wanna report on anything about our year-end or, I think, on the cemetery?
Oh, on the cemetery. Well, the cemetery, I've been working with this Pioneer project. And it's going a little bit slow. And what we had talked about is the possibility, nothing we have to do today. But the possibility of maybe next summer, we can get an intern to come in and, and help us, cause we have to find where these people are. And, uh, we do have a big book that the Genealogy Society over Ravenna prepared for us back in nineteen ninety-one. With an update for nineteen thirty-eight, but the last burial at the Pioneer Cemetery was like in nineteen twenty. And so we're, we're working with it.
They should be quick. I gotta be quick.
Holly, can you recall anything that you wanna share?
Yeah, we just got our last meeting for the year and just kind of, we'll be pulling together just some general statistics, um, just about how many burials, cremations, changes that we made this year, just to document.
We had like thirty, thirty-two, uh, burials this year in, in Restland area. So it's back thirty-two there. And we're, we're, we're working with, uh, trying to get people interested in the calaverium, that we can have some crem. that we can have some cremations put in there.
Yeah, so we did, um, we did reduce the cost of the calaverium. Um, and just talking about ways to make sure everybody knows the pricing because we can try and get that filled up.
And we did, we did pass this year on this board that we suggested that there is a way that you can have four, four cremains on one, one plot. And that's, we have local cemeteries, I think one in Edinburgh that has adopted this. And so that way we can have more, more of our people represented. We spent $126,000 on acquiring an additional five acres to be added to the cemetery. And that money did not come from our taxpayers here. That came through that CARES federal grant and they paid up the whole, the whole $126,000 for us. So we're really, we're, we're moving along and we, we just really appreciate everybody working with us on it.
Okay. Thanks, Sue. And John, do you have anything on fiscal?
I do not. Just don't spend any more money.
Okay. Okay, well, and then that, there's no new business. So I'm gonna make a motion that we take a quick five-minute break and then we're gonna go to executive session. We have three executive sessions, so make sure. First one I got here. I wanna make sure I'm reading the right one. Okay, this day 12/9/24, trustee Mike Kostenski moved to convene an executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121-22G for the purpose of considering the following matters. Compensation of a public employee or official.
You need a second.
I will second that with a question mark. It should be 12/11. I can give that one again at the top.
His glasses. Oh, no, it's his glasses.
Oh, yeah, they're nice. Screw my sign ops.
12/11 on there. Great.
Doesn't that look like a nine?
No.
That looks like a nine.
Sorry.
Okay. We got that one. You wanted to make.
We need a vote on that then?
Yeah, all in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Then we got, uh, this day 12/11/24, and I say I can read that 11. Trustee Mike Kostenski moved to convene an executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121-22G for the purpose of considering the following matters. Number two, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of property at a competitive bidding. Premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competition. Competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal, private interest is adverse to the general public's interest. No member of a public body shall use Division G to, of the section, as a subterfuge for providing covert information to prospective buyers or sellers. A purchase or sale of public property is valid, is void if the seller or buyer of the public property has received covert information from a member of a public body that has not been disclosed to the general public in a sufficient time for other prospective buyers and sellers to prepare and submit offers.
You need a second.
I need a second.
I will second.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and the third one. Now see, look how clear Roy writes that.
It was Holly.
Holly, look at that.
She knew you couldn't read it.
This day 12/11/24, trustee Mike Kostenski moved to convene an executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, 121-22G for the purpose of considering the following matter. Number four, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiation or bargaining session with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
You need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Nick. We are in executive session. Motion passed at 9:13.
And I'm in the little boys room.
Alright, so we come out of the second session, I'd like to first make a motion for discussion. The memorandum of understanding between Brinkfield Township and the Internal Order of Peace, why our label comes in root and gold for changes to Article 30 holidays and personal days. Second for discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
So based upon Chief Moses Lee's recommendation, we review personal days for the bargaining unit. We identified that they have to use those within the year period, but for hiring afterwards. So we're hiring within that two-month period and it's forced them to take vacation days for training. That doesn't make sense, so we're amending the contract to allow for the purpose of this, to amend the contract to allow for them to carry those days over for one year.
Yeah, I agree. I think it gives more time instead of coming in just having to use.
Yeah, and I think it allows for that use of those personal days for vacation time during that first year when they don't contribute as much, so I think it's a good decision.
On favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Alright, we got one more motion here. I would like to make a motion as a resolution approving and continuing the appointment of Dave Rooker as Road Superintendent for Brinkfield Township. Second for discussion.
I'll second it.
So we are moving away from the employment contracts and just going to... How do we define this?
Well, if you put it like a letter, a letter which will define employment terms.
And so this is just, Dave Rooker's contract is up at the end of this year.
So it's a one...
We had reviewed that for discussion, and then you brought forward your recommendation and doing the board this number, I agree with your recommendation on this.
So it's gonna be a 1-1...
They started carrying jobs.
1-125 is when it's gonna be effective.
Correct.
Okay.
Mike, you second?
Yeah, I second.
On favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. Get to adjourned.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yep, I'll second.
On favor, Mike? Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. You missed.